Orders of the day. Public hearing, amend the local zoning. Matt have a motion to open that public hearing. That's on the zoning for allow Key Bank to be able to.
I'll make the motion to.
Put our body over there. Drive through. Second.
I'll second.
All favor.
I agree. Will this affect the parking spots at all behind? Will this affect the parking spots at all behind the building where against office and?
No.
Okay.
Basically, they're in like a neighborhood one zone and they're right next to the fire department, which is a VC zone. And the neighborhood one where the drive through is there doesn't allow for you have a canopy over and be the whip where basically this zoning change is just going to move Key Bank into the VC zone.
Okay. I'm just curious because it's all the same.
They still have access out the back and parking that's back there.
Parking will still be.
Where do they drive through now to come up to the drive up? They just want to canopy that area.
Right, so it will change the parking here in the VC.
No, it won't change any of the parking or any of the traffic around it. It's just a cover for where the ATM machine is eventually.
But it's just the zone it's in won't allow for that canopy.
Okay.
And going planning department, basically Kathy said the best way to do it would be because it's right on the edge to just move them over.
If we approve this, it still has to go site plan approval.
All right.
In the VC zone themselves. It's not done yet, basically.
The review was.
It's actually going before the county planning tomorrow. We have to wait until we get their reviews back also.
We can't really approve. Can we approve the time and the conditions?
I don't think we can approve anything until we hear back from the county. Let's see what they got to say on it. Is that right?
Yeah, that's.
Maybe we gotta hear back from them.
That's correct.
Any other questions on that particular item? Okay, public hearing proposal for law, no parking, stopping or standing on Reed's terrace. Need a motion to open that public hearing?
So moved. I'll second.
All favor.
I agree.
And comments on that one?
I haven't seen. Is it Charlotte Sullivan? Is she the one that was here?
Charlotte, yes.
And she said things have gotten a lot better there, so I just validated it on the board.
But we got cones up there right now, so.
She said it's better.
All right, the third public hearing. Proposed local law, no parking on North State Street. Basically, that's from Davenport Place to Bosworth. And the main reason for doing that, it's going to affect maybe anywhere from two to four spots maybe, but it's right up there where the street narrows down. And basically, we've been asked by the state of New York Traffic Control to change that because they're wanting to be doing work on North State Street and it's going to be all re-struck when they're done. And they claim it's too narrow up there for site distance. So that's the main reason the village is asking to change that. We have a motion to open that public hearing.
I will.
Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Any comment on that one? Permitting.
I guess I'd like to make a comment on that. You know, people, people post stuff on Facebook all the time now as a way of communicating. Well, I don't think it's fair to the village up board all the time with people doing that unless they get their figure straight. Somebody put on Facebook that if we pass this local law, that it's going to affect businesses and this and that. Well, there's no businesses there. They didn't get their facts before they.
I think the statement was that there was no parking on North State Street altogether. It's just a few spots where it narrows up there.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, can we have an approval of April 19th, record board minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve that in the regular meeting in April. I'll second that one.
All favor.
I agree.
Approval of vouchers.
We've got general fund, forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three We've got water fund, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, eighty-five cents. We've got sewer fund, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars, ninety-nine cents. And we got a biggie capital fund, more than eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. And the majority of that are pay ads for construction going on. Want to comment on that, George?
Yeah, basically, there's one for ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, another one for two hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's all work up on the groundwater project. And I believe eighty thousand, three hundred, that's on the sewer project. Spencer Electric is also on a water project that leave that eighteen thousand. So it's both projects. And one thing, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, Manford didn't get it in to us in time. It should have been in last month's pay app. That's why this capital fund is so high. There's almost an extra two hundred and eighty-five thousand should have been paid last month. They didn't get the pay apps still as of July.
I have a question. We paid three thousand, sixty dollars to the Powell Corporation. I'm talking to the ladies. We have a contract apparently with them.
Which one, Dan?
Powell Corporation.
Dan, that is a communication contract. So if something happens with the Paloma, we can actually call them, get information from them, try to repair it. We've done that in the past. It's a lot cheaper than having them come up here. Just ongoing thing with the.
It's a standard contract. I mean, it's basically a maintenance contract for three thousand dollars and you still may have to have them come up, but it's an insurance policy that it belongs to.
With the, with the amount of issues that we've had with it from day one, it's good to have a maintenance contract because our guys are still trying to figure out stuff with it. So the sooner we can get rid of it, the better. The Paloma.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All favor.
I agree.
Unfinished business wastewater.
So the wastewater, been doing some odds and ends trying to get this, the work on the treatment building finished up, getting the startup going. We're still waiting on the story of our life since COVID, waiting on electrical equipment and materials. The biggest thing is that treatment building is now operating manually. We're running it. But, you know, Callan has to be there and watching it. Once we get this, once we get our SCADA system started up, should be this month, this next month, then it would be automated like, like the, like it's designed to be. But right now, you're operating, you're creating chlorine and you're treating the sewage as it's leaving the lagoon too, which was part of the, one of the priorities of this project with the DEC. We're just doing it manually. Basically, those pumps are on and then he turns them off when they need to shut off. Coming up the rest of this week, tomorrow, we're going to have a diver on site to put some plugs in the outlet and inlet pipes to the lagoon. And that'll allow us to make some repairs to the, to the valves in there. And Callan's aware of it, so he's lowered the, lowered the lagoon level, so we're ready to close those off for a short period of time. Any questions on that?
What lagoon are they going to do in it?
Both.
It's going to be the diver channel.
Found a special.
I read that on there.
It's in there all the time, that. After all.
Groundwater.
Coming soon, we're going to have to test. We're again waiting for electrical equipment and its panels, basically. It's not the panel itself, it's the components in the panels that we can't seem to get. Got in this SCADA system, you know, we're working on that, pushing those things as best we can. We're going to have to talk to the general contractor about doing testing in a manner so we can get him, him done with his work while we're waiting for the electrician. That's all.
We did get our transformer generator, they showed us.
Yes, that was one of those, one of the payment applications. The pole is set now, the national.
We got to do the change order.
Yep, North Line set the pole. There's a change order in there as Joe mentioned for additional grounding. What that was, we, we bid the project and then after we bid it, National Grid finally gave us comments on, on the grounding requirements and they changed those up a little bit, so.
So basically, it's going to be a change order for about three thousand dollars for the extra grounding that National Grid required. We'll need a motion to approve change order for Spencer Electric for three thousand. Second. Heard any more questions on it?
I'll second.
All favor.
I agree.
Those are, unless you have any questions.
Straight light LED conversion. Just got an email from Nikki. We're still back and forth with our authority trying to get the final invoices put together. I checked on the lights that we were supposed to get put off. They're telling me that they're still waiting on starts. It'll probably be in September, but before they're back here to install those new lights.
It's just, it's just a part of a part that you can't get. That's the problem.
I'm hearing that every time.
I know, I know.
And it's getting a little frustrating. So that's basically no movement on that since the last. Music in the park, anything, Dan?
Since last month, I can't say that there's a whole lot. We have eight weeks scheduled, six weeks have been filled. We will get flyers out around the community as soon as we have the full eight weeks. We will have music on the Fourth of July, which is a Tuesday. We'll start the last Tuesday in June and run every Tuesday except for fair week until the eight weeks has succumbed. And at this point in time, we have twenty-five hundred dollars. Sponsors are the villages, twenty-five hundred dollars. Sliders, W V Payne and Umpire, twenty-five hundred. United Healthcare, a thousand. And right now, I think we're going to have another seven hundred and fifty coming. We, in line with that, we had two nominations for Citizen of the Year. The Loblaws Academy has come back with the winner and we'll be doing that again at the fair parade that night in July. That's it.
Okay, we'll be then public hearings open for a while and move down to new business. Craft surcharges, March twenty twenty-three, it was five hundred dollars for sewer. And for April of twenty twenty-three, it was zero for water. Basically, we need a motion to approve the five hundred dollar sewer charge of craft tile.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Daniel, did you have a sheet on the budget about that?
Yeah, I think they were in, they should be in everybody's pocket. They're in mine. So if you need them, Joe, I can give them to you. Here's mine if you want. They should be right over in the, yeah, they're all right here.
Oh, there they are.
Yep, here, here. I know I messed you guys up by doing double sided. Trying to save trees.
Oh, this is industry where we don't.
Smart use of your resources.
And support of local laws.
Most of the budget amendments were just cleaning up, getting ready for year end.
Anybody got any questions on those? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
That's for all three, correct?
Yep. All favor.
I agree.
Okay, these are, we're going to need motions for each one of these.
I will make, I'll make the motion for the Loblaws Fire Department.
For me to sign your contract, which is sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and four cents. Second. All favor.
I agree.
Motion to authorize me to sign the library contract for five thousand.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Billy's Band Concerts, four thousand dollars for the Billy's Band.
So moved. Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Loblaws Senior Citizens Club, five hundred dollars.
Also moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All favor. Double Play. Basically, we need a motion on this, but I also want to get board approval for this sixty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars is the proposal for this summer's rec program. Bob Mullin, myself, Mike Young, chairperson of the rec, Dan Myers, and Mrs. Dumpel King from the school. We all met here a couple of weeks ago. Mike Young had put in for three grants for the recreation committee. Basically, he was awarded two of them. And it's about twenty-six thousand dollars. They want to use six thousand of that for, to go towards their field trips and eat food they might need. So they told Paul or not, well, Bob and I, we could have twenty thousand of that grant money to put towards this sixty-five thousand. And then I had an email back from Ryan and he said that partly it was thanks to, I guess, Dick Shartrun's efforts, they agreed to pay three hundred dollars a child for outside the town and village again this year. So looking at those two numbers, it's going to drop this sixty-five down towards more manageable like in the past for the village. So Bob's planning on getting his board to go along with it tomorrow. My thought is if you guys are okay with that, then we need to go ahead and do up a contract with Double Play for that amount. And basically, what we do, it would be in June, they would get sixty percent of that upfront in June to get started because they have to do payroll and everything. And then when the project or the program is over, they get the other forty percent. Any questions up?
I think that sounds good, Mayor.
What's that?
I like it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor.
I agree.
Joe, do you want us to change the amount then that the village shall pay so it doesn't stay sixty-five? Should we take the twenty off of that?
No, do it just the way it is. Because what will happen is then, like we've done in the past, we do the final report, then we.
We'll adjust the final bill. Okay.
Because like, like I told Wendy, those checks should be showing up here because that money was approved in the Aprils.
Okay.
But it usually takes them a month to get the checks to us. Got a couple of appointments. We need an alternate on municipal board. So I'd like to mark, appoint Mark Cable as the alternate to the municipal board through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Make that motion. I'll second that.
Mark's agreed to it?
He says Mark no. Does Mark know that he?
He's at the meeting last week.
I guess my brother's law, but I'm going to vote for him.
That's a great choice.
All favor.
I agree.
Okay, we also had a lady that her term was up on the recreation committee and she does not want to be reappointed. So I'd like to appoint Ed Murphy on the recreation committee through five thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight.
I make that motion?
I'll second.
All favor.
I agree.
Juneteenth holiday. Basically, I know this year, I think the DPW has been that putting their contract as a floater. But I know last year we voted on it whether or not we wanted to give it to the office staff and the police department. And it's actually becoming a national and state holiday, so.
I know they're giving it on a federal level, so I think it's, I mean, it's not mandatory, but I think, I think we should.
I know the state, New York State.
Is McGotty doing it? Tim McGotty's not doing it?
No.
Really?
No, they didn't. They won't do it because it's not in the contract.
Oh.
But I'm all for it.
Of course you are.
See, you can't have it, you don't have a contract.
What, that's why I can't have it because I'm not in a contract.
I'll make a motion that for this year, we allow, we allow the departments in the community to use it as a that day or a floating day.
I'll second that one.
Second.
All favor.
I agree.
Okay, contract for use in the village park on June second. That's where the, I believe the county wants to have their.
Community cop.
Community cop, yeah. They've had it the last couple of years. Everything's gone fine, so we just need to approve that and get back on level, we're good to go.
I'll make a motion we approve that.
They've already sent us all their insurance and everything, so we should be good.
Wendy said the only thing we didn't get this year is last year, Ryan gave us a waiver they all signed saying that if something happened, they wouldn't come back on the village. That's the only difference this year, we didn't get that from Ryan. So I don't know if you want the same.
Doesn't mean anything in this.
Yeah, I don't know, she told me just to tell you.
Would you be with the attorney's files?
Why don't you say so?
Waivers don't really need that much, so I don't think.
Sometimes it depends. Some waivers can be voids against public policy. It really is back for them.
So it's up to the board. I mean, the proof of the copy of the waiver or that's up to you guys. I don't know about.
I don't care.
Don't think we need it, do you?
Yeah. I don't think it's running either trip anyway, so let's, let's just let them do it.
They've done it for two years with no problem, so hopefully.
Say our lawyer's head didn't explode, so I guess it's not a big deal.
I'm paying him for advice, so.
Like I said, if that exploded, I.
I'll make the motion that we allow the county to get a waiver.
Second.
All favor.
I agree.
I got one other thing for new business.
Yeah.
If you're done.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to talk a little bit about the DRI initiative again this year, which is probably going to, last year didn't get awarded or started in August, but it's probably going to be a little bit later this year from what I understand it because we're already starting to work on it. I know we had budgeted five thousand dollars towards it, you know, from last year. So the money's already there for that, but another, a few things have come up regarding private investment and other things. And basically, that's what we're looking to expand on. So the corridor from, basically from Co-op down through the Forest Ave, which would include that old AMF building, that I think Food Pantry owns that one, right?
Yeah.
I believe you. Yeah, that, Berkers property there where Double Play was going to go isn't part of that whole thing. Because what happened last year, I think we took that area out of the map, right? We're looking to expand and put it back in and basically come up with a master plan for that whole area down there for a couple of reasons, for the vacant buildings there. And with the attention of Co-op leaving that whole section, they're supposedly going up on the hill there. I don't know if that's going to, probably won't happen this year, but if we come up with a master plan for that whole section down through that whole corridor, or of course it involves the railroad trail there or whatever too, but also puts us in position for grant money down the road. I mean, you know that too.
Does that include that seven acres of field that Berkers?
Yeah.
Do they have an idea what they want to do there or aren't they saying?
Well, that's what the master plan would do.
Okay. But they don't have any, it's just general right now.
Yeah, this is just general. I know there's somebody that is interested in going back in their refused brewing is. I mean, if we could get somebody, if we could get a brewery that wanted to do something there, to build a brewery or a restaurant brewery, whatever, I mean, that would be huge. It would be huge on the DRI, it would be huge on the building period. So we've been working on this for a couple of months because the last few years, we started to go up a month ahead of time. I mean, it's just a rat race. I mean, you can't hardly get it done in time, can you, Joe? So I guess what I'm asking tonight is, and I guess we don't have to make a decision tonight, but if in fact we go and try to get some kind of master plan for that area and include that back in the DRI, it might cost a couple thousand dollars more. And I know that the other entities would have to bump up too, you know what I'm saying? Is the board willing or is the village willing to somehow come up with a two thousand dollars more to put towards our application this year to basically expand on it and to upgrade it so that we actually have a, I think we got shot anyway, but we do need more private investment, right? They said that every year.
But I think that's part of the problem with the DRI, we need more.
We do.
Private people.
We have, we have more private people. We already have some because I don't know if you guys see the award from Natry Lewis, the Kellogg Block there.
Yep.
And then above the Allen General, they both got awarded a hundred thousand dollars for renovation of those apartments there. So that's definitely going to help, but we need more, even if it's on paper for right now, which you can't just go in there and say you're going to put this here, this here, this here. You got to have something, you got to have the visual there, you got to have the, so if in fact we go with Lobella, I think it was last year, it may cost a little bit more. I don't know where that money could come from. I don't know, could it come from ARCA funds, could it come from?
Do we use U-DAG money?
We don't have very much U-DAG money left, that's the problem.
I think we're only talking.
Yes, if we had enough there, we probably could use some U-DAG money, yeah.
I think we're only talking a couple, maybe three thousand dollars more for the application.
I think U-DAG, I think we have like.
I think it would be well worth it.
I think, can I make the suggestion or I'll make a motion? In the spirit of cooperation, I'll make the motion that we, we allow up to two thousand dollars towards the development of that.
Right now.
Yes.
I was looking for three, Dan, can you up that?
You weren't looking for three.
Well, I just, I mean, it's early, I mean.
It's early.
We're not even in the next year's budget yet, but it is twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, you say no.
Super time year for the village.
I understand. So I don't know if we need to make the motion or not tonight or just the intent, a couple thousand.
Let us, why don't we, we got a rough idea, why don't we give us this month to look around, see where we might be able to come up with.
Well, I think we got to start now. If we, if we decide to do this master plan, that's kind of something that's got to happen with, they're ahead of the application, you see what I'm saying?
I think, I think for this, do we want to make the motion tonight or not? I mean, it sounds like.
Well, we do have five thousand committed.
We have five thousand committed right now. I would say a couple thousand, a couple, three thousand more than that, basically.
I think we're good for it, one way or another. I don't, I don't think they're coming.
Joe, we can look at U-DAG and stuff this week and see, I think there's something there.
We're also going to be using some of that U-DAG money for. We're also gonna be using some of that U-DAG money for, I know I need at least 5,000 of it for a project we're gonna do in Veterans Park. So that's why I just wanted to see how much was left there.
Yeah, I think there's about 20 in there.
Should be all right.
I think.
I don't, I don't think that payment would come like tomorrow, you know what I'm saying?
No, it doesn't, I mean, we, Cassandra usually sends me the bill and then I.
Right, and.
We're making a lot of interest now, too, on the accounts with the community, so that might help, like, offset the U-DAG account a little bit.
I think, I think, I think we need right now, just the, the okay, saying yes, we will add to our funding.
Again, another problem, making the motion, I think we'll find $2,000, so whatever the board wants to do, I mean, I'll put the motion back on the table.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. For 2,000?
Is it for 2,000, or did you move ahead with the master plan and up the application fee? How are we, how do you want the motion?
Problem is, I don't know what the final figures are, that's the problem, you know what I mean? But if we, if we could approve, if we had with the master plan, or, or look into doing the master plan, you know, with, with the county, with IDA, and all those people that are gonna put money into, which they have in the past, they're gonna up their game, we'll up our game, so.
And couldn't, I'll make the motion, in conjunction with the other agencies, we will be a part of conjunction to, to throw in the extra money. And then we'll talk about that when it comes out.
Right, we can make that decision in the end.
Right.
That's it.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I don't see anybody else here. Shall we go back to zoning? Motion to close a public hearing on public zoning.
I'll make that motion.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposal of law, no standing, stopping, ever reach terrace, a motion to close that public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, on that one, we need to go ahead and make a motion to adopt that, right?
You, you made if you wish, yes.
So if we have a motion to go ahead and adopt that new local law.
I'll make the motion to adopt that new local law.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
So on the zoning, we, basically, we should wait till we hear back from the county before we do that, I believe.
Yeah, if I, if I may, there, just for background on it, because a lot of moving parts, so, so if, if I understand correctly, last month's meeting, Key Bank had representatives here, they're looking at making upgrades, improvements to their structure. With that, that they're gonna require some municipal approval. Now, now with that, one of the things they apparently identified was that the zone for part of this would need to be changed, and that's what we began the process. The application was submitted for a zone change for a parcel, roughly a half an acre, from the NC to the DC, as I recall. Now with that, their application was for the board, the board accepted it as being complete in an effort to move the process along. But keeping in mind that, that even with a zone change, if the board grants a zone change, the local law, they still have to go back to the planning board with respect to the site plan, things like that, so there's a lot of moving parts with it. Now, by accepting the application as complete, that, that was pretty important, because it, it really moves the process along. The first thing that happened was it triggers a referral out to the county for this 239 M review to see whether there are significant countywide issues or not. Now, one aspect about all this is, if you think of it, you're the board that decides what land uses are authorized in your zoning, okay? New York State has a twist on that, and they say, yep, you decide what uses are authorized, you get to change your zoning as you see fit. But before you can undertake a zone change like that, or what they call an action, you have to perform an environmental review. And, and that environmental review, we all know is SEACER, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Now with that, an issue came up, and Danielle, you pointed it out to me a couple of weeks ago. With respect to paperwork that you, you submit to people, if they're interested in zone changes, you say, well, this is the type of information that, that you're looking to receive. One of the things is, you indicate that for purposes of SEACER, you typically look for a long form SEACER form, okay? Never go wrong by looking for a long form SEACER. The SEACER, there are two different pathways, one is the long form, one is the short form. Key Bank, when they submitted their paperwork, they'd submitted the short form, and the board had accepted that as being complete at that time, so you're going forward with it. So the question becomes, okay, so if normally, if somebody looks for a zone change, if, if they get the application from the village, and if they're normally supposed to submit a long form, and Key Bank didn't, Key Bank submitted a short form, and we've accepted that as complete, will that create any issues? I, I think that it won't, and, and I'll tell you why. I mean, I, I think that it was, it's a good question that Danielle asked, you know, we typically look for more information, not less. The long form gives you more information, not less, but from a, from a technical standpoint, I think, under the state regulations, when you look at which form you must use, because this would be a zone change, and, and the, the threshold is less than 25 acres, you're dealing with a half an acre round numbers, technically, that would not be what's known as a, a type one action, meaning it would not technically require a long form SEACER under those state regs. You can still require it if you want, but, but I've been just saying that from a strict standpoint, you're not required to. So with that, all that means is, is the matter can still go forward, and you can still process the application. And, and one of the twists is, is, well, you still have to wait to hear back from the county. Now, the county might look at this with a 239 M review and say, well, you know, we, we would, we as a county would prefer a long form. They, they can do that, I mean, we won't know until, I guess, tomorrow with one of the, with the timeline.
Well, they did, they did ask the secretary, and basically went back and forth to the planning, and he planned it, checked with somebody in the state, and the last we knew, they were agreeable to take the short form.
Short form, okay.
Because, like you say, it's less than half an acre.
Now, again, and, and so, again, from a technical standpoint, I mean, you never go wrong by saying, we want more information rather than less. But the, the, the key here is, if you're trying to promote development, and as long as you're following the rules, you're, you're still, I think, in a pretty good position, but unfortunately, you still have to hurry up and wait for one more day. So, so what you have with that now, if you think of it, you've had the public hearing, you've closed it, the next step is, is we've gotta wait to hear back from the county. And then based upon what, what comments or recommendations they make, that sets the table for what you do next. What you would be able to do sometime after tomorrow is, number one, wrap up that SEACER process. And, and what I've done just in advance, because I know that sometimes you'll have meetings other than the one that you asked me to attend, I've made sure you've got a, a, a copy of the proposed Part Two and Part Three for the short form SEACER law, and a proposed, and I didn't want to be presumptuous, negative declaration with it. And so if something happens, you get the information, and you decide that, no, four days from now, you wanna proceed, I just want you to have that information at your fingertips, so you can proceed if you want. Once that SEACER is done, then you, you really get to the heart and soul of a zone change request, that's a simple local law. You've got that information as well, the resolution with the local law, and, and the key is, is what you'd be changing is the zoning on that one parcel. It changes the zoning map. Now, the only little twist here that hasn't come up yet on that map is, you know, it's gonna be expensive for the village to update your map, you have to have a surveyor involved. Normally, what you do requires, you require a needs and bounds description. Now, and, and that's normally provided by the applicant. The applicant says, look, I own the half acre parcel, I've got the deed for the half acre parcel, we've already had it surveyed, and, and they can usually share that needs and bounds description with you. So if you adopt the local law, it makes it easier to update your map, because your map will change if you go forward with it. So there's just a lot of moving parts with all that, so I want to make sure you're all aware of it upfront, but. And I'll answer any questions you might have with it. Guess I'll put y'all to sleep.
Can we adopt the SEACER now, before the county, or no?
Now, you can, you've got, you can, you can wrap up SEACER anytime before you take the final action. Final action would be if you decide to vote on the local law, but what, what I would suggest is this, because we still have to wait to hear back from the county, the safer course is to say, well, before we, before we do SEACER, let's hear what the county has to say. Because the county, county might say, well, we, we really would prefer, and if you've got a policy saying it's a long form, they might say, we would prefer you to use a long form, and if that happens, let me know, and we can, we can do that quickly for the village, but the applicant should be involved with that, that process.
Cause their meeting's tomorrow, usually, they'll notify us when it's 24 to 40, yeah.
But I, I know that, that you wanna be able to be responsive to positive development in the village, I assume that Key wants to be able to move forward quickly, so what theoretically happens is, you really can't do much on this if you wanna wait to hear back from the county. You could consider whether you want to adjourn your meeting tonight to some other day in time after tomorrow, and, and at that point, you could proceed, or you wait until next month, whatever your pleasure is.
If we do that, then we don't have to vote by a, a special meeting, is that why you're saying?
Yeah, see, the, the thing is, is New York State makes things tough sometimes, so if, if you wrap up your meeting tonight, and, and then is, and then let's say you find out tomorrow what happened to the county, or if you decide to close your meeting and set a public hearing, let's say, four days from now, you can do that, special meeting, but, but to do that, you've gotta advertise for it, it gets expensive and time consuming. And, and, and then you've got, you've gotta make sure the public knows when you're updating on your bulletin board, your website. What you can do as an alternative is to conduct your business tonight, and then at the end of it, adjourn, let's say, for the same four days from now, for instance.
Maybe you could do that.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just a mechanism that saves you some money. It just, just saves you money, because you, you're doing some business today, and you're adjourning it to another date, place, and time, and then, and by adjourning the meeting, the other advantage is, is when you adjourn a meeting, you can do any business that might come before you. While if you have a special meeting, it's only for that enumerated purpose, but you've got some flexibility with it, it's all.
And the public had a chance to make whatever, kind of, which, you know, apparently, we're okay.
Yeah, and now, and now with, with an adjourned meeting, we, we do this, you haven't got a notice in the, in the official newspaper, but what you do is, you, you would, practically speaking, put on your bulletin board and your website, if you have the time, to make sure the public knows, because it is open, open to the public.
Any other questions, Bradman? Okay, proposal of law, no parking on North State Street, we need to close that public hearing.
No. Second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if you wanna adopt that local law, we need a motion to adopt it.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Brings us down to correspondence, so. Got the Red Bull Moose Letter, anybody? Any questions on that? Okay, we got B, C, D, and E, it's from Lewis County Assessment, the assessments are off, changed, I won't say all off, but they changed on our property on Number Three Road, our property on River Street, our property on Forest Ave. Anybody have any questions on those?
I do, and I, what's the property on River Street?
Down there. I'd thought about that one myself at first.
Trying to figure out, we had a patient or?
Yeah, it's seven acres over there. Anybody else have any other questions on the assessments? I have my garage one up, that's because Paul unsated the ceiling.
Yeah.
You're saving money, money, money.
Money, you save money, right?
Okay, I, Ed, Danielle, basically, I received a packet of these letters at my house, I received a packet of these letters addressed to the village board, that's why I wanted everybody to see these letters from Eastern Street. I'm not saying that there's not water running down that street in heavy rains, but they're kinda down in a hole up there. Someday, probably, we'll have to go up there and put in some new drainage and things, but that's gonna be another major project similar to our five streets.
Talking probably a million plus.
Yeah, it's not going to be an easy solution, the biggest, I, I mean, it's around the corner to my house, and I, I know exactly what the problem is. Or, I shouldn't say I know exactly what the problem is, I know what's happening, what they're complaining about. And like you said, it's not going to be an easy fix, because it's, it's just the way water flows, it's not, you know what I mean, it's, it's.
If you look at elevation from Mary Lou Reed's house to Clinton Street, I mean, you've got 75, 40 foot drop. And everything flows down there, the road is actually tilted towards their side of the street.
Yeah, part of the problem, part of the problem is the, the, um, the center crown of the road has no downhill slope on the uphill side of the road, it's, it's level, so all the water that comes down Clinton, or off Clinton Street and down Eastern Street literally ends up on that side of the street, and the only way really to channel it better would be to put in, I don't even know what size drainage to put in there for a storm drain.
It's not even just storm drain, obviously, you can't have the water run to the other side of the road.
Right, you can't make it go uphill.
Um, you're looking at, you're looking at catch basins, uh, obviously, storm sewer pipes, or stormwater pipes. You're looking at new curving, probably elevation of the sidewalk.
The new curving and.
Yeah, because if you go from, say, from the curving to the existing sidewalk, you're still at, at least a foot to two foot drop. So you're, you're looking at bringing in tons of film, because even if you put new curving and catch basins in there, like they're talking in here, you know, moderate to heavy rainstorms, you're still gonna get more flow of water coming down there, and it's gonna go in people's driveways, no matter what.
Well, it's not just driveways, it's, it's going in the basements, and, but, but again, it, it, there's no easy solution, it's.
No, you're talking a lot of money.
My question is, is it something recently?
No.
Been an issue?
No, this has been.
This, this has been.
Or it's getting worse. Because of something.
It gets worse, because now we have those torrential downwinds. When you have a moderate rain, I mean, they do give low water down there, it's basically those, the big storms that we have. And you just, there's no way to stop it now, you know, without a lot of work to the street, which would basically have to be a total reconstruction of the street.
Is there, this is a question I probably don't know the answer to. Is there any way that we can do anything in a stopgap to help, uh, maybe soften the problem?
Before I became superintendent, I believe Mr. Wetmore or Mrs. Reed, one of them, had, had put concrete in their driveway to try to stop it, which basically, it does stop some of it, but the stuff that doesn't go there now goes down to the next neighbor, goes into their yard, goes into their garages and stuff, and Mrs. Reed is way down here in the other houses that are here, it's, it's a no win situation unless you do a total reconstruction of the road.
I mean, you could, you could put in new curving, but it wouldn't solve the whole problem.
You put in the curving, what are you gonna do in the driveways?
Yeah, that's, exactly, it wouldn't. Well, you would have to, right, you'd have to concrete. Well, you would have to, right, you'd have to concave the driveway. Yeah. Yeah. Again, it's not an easy solution.
It's, it's something, well, Joe brought it up to me because I hadn't been here in a few days and, you know, it's been an ongoing problem and we'll continue to look into it and see what we can do if there's grand money out there or something.
Because basically our hope is get these projects done and then go after some, hopefully some grand money that we can do.
That one, do you figure that out?
Seven of our last five streets project.
Oh, you're going to say.
I was going to say many of the, many of the low guests.
Over and out.
Yeah.
Because if you're going to do it, you might as well do it the right way and reconstruct the road, uh, you know.
But we should reconstruct the sewer too when we do it because of.
How many other issues do we have like that?
The sewers are down through the backyard.
There, there are more.
There are.
I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with the continuous continuation of the, uh, the hospital parking lot, that twenty-four inch storm that comes down through the two shacks, down all the way through, uh, the wet Eugene Fairview Stewart, um, what's up, talk about here.
I was going to say, the last three years, we've had problems with existing storm drains collapsing where we've been out, sometimes one year there where we ended up putting a two hundred and some feet pipe and that was a few behind Boston Street that we hadn't planned on, but we had to do because the pipe could collapse. So every time we think we're going to get ahead and be able to do something someplace else, we've got some of the old infrastructure that drops and.
Yeah, and that, that infrastructure's been in there for eighty, hundred years. So it's, it's bound to fail. I mean, that's the reason that the village is in the five street project. You, you know, you, you watch the news or anything, all these municipalities that are talking about infrastructure, infrastructure. And I think we're, from what we've done with the five street project and some other projects, I mean, we're, we're trying to catch up and get ahead of the game. And the products nowadays are so much better. You don't use corrugated steel anymore, use plastic, so it's going to last a long time.
But you still got to dig a hole, put it in.
Yeah.
And pay for it.
The other thing was funding, they don't, and you guys struggled with this on the five streets, they don't like to replace sidewalks and even curbs. But we made the case that because we were replacing the sewer and the water, we needed to replace the storm sewer, which was under your curb. So you've got, you know, all that curb got replaced, but the sidewalks ended up being patchwork. We replaced a lot of them, but that was, that was not allowed unless you do it, unless it's had to, you know, you had to have it because of the service or this connection.
And again, these are, these are my neighbors. I, I know the problem they're dealing with and if you don't bring, I mean, some of their foundations are, aren't even up to the level of the street. So, you know, you're, like you said, water flows downhill. You can't, you can only divert it, so.
No, they.
It's not going to be a cheap fix.
I, I was saying all that to say that it's, it's a problem, but you make that the project, right? The project is fixing this drainage problem, which has and needs to involve their sidewalks and all of that.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Village attorney, do you have anything for us other than?
No, one last thing. Last month you adopted the local law for garage sales and that became effective April twenty-fourth. So it is offered, but that was it.
What about the RV one? We adopted that one.
I didn't get a confirmation yet.
Oh, I, I just related to what came and not heard anything.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, one, I want to make note that, uh, one of our DPW workers, Darren DeBois, got a phone call last week. The gentleman was very happy that Darren happened to be walking back to the DPW garage to get a piece of equipment. Had a fire over there on Forest Ave, started on their porch. And he hollered to Darren and Darren went and got a fire extinguisher and actually had the fire out before the fire department got there. So had it not been for Darren going back to the DPW garage to get a piece of equipment that day, the guy could have lost part of his house. Just wanted the board to be aware of that. We got a phone call from the gentleman that owned the house and he was very happy that our guy was there that day. The other thing I got is last year, we had our clock on the four corners, went through and it was completely checked over. Uh, we thought it was timed because it'd been five years since it was put up and had been checked. It was five hundred and fifty dollars last year to get that done. Uh, they sent a contract this year. They'd like us to renew the contract for a yearly inspection. And of course the prices go up along with everything else. It's six hundred and fifty dollars this year. And it's funny that we didn't have budgeted this year because we just had the clock checked out since last summer or fall. So it's up to the board, but I don't really think we might be able to.
I was going to say, did they find anything wrong with the clock? Just out of curiosity?
No, they just.
So, I mean, if we have it checked out once every five years and it costs us five and six hundred bucks on that occasion, that's certainly smarter than five hundred dollars a year just because.
I'm not saying we, we have to go another five years, but it's been less than, it's been less than eight months since it was checked out. I'm just thinking we don't need to renew it.
No, I, I agree.
While we're on the subject of the clock, do we ever play music? I don't like podcasting music.
Yeah, it plays.
When you walk through the village, like I did with my wife.
Sherry Boras' husband's one of the children. So if there's something special you want to go see.
When's your birthday?
Probably your birthday.
We did have to turn it down because, uh.
Some of the apartment people were complaining.
Yeah, some of the apartment people were complaining because it was too, uh.
Okay, that's all I got. Uh, clerk treasurer, you have anything?
Uh, no.
Chief of police.
You got your reports, full monthly reports. And the, the charges you got behind it, this particular one is on East State Street. So the speed signs that are up, Phil's still in the process of figuring out and learning how to get this to work a little bit better and what all they can give or charge. So each month we'll try to throw a charge in wherever we're moving the sign to. So right now it's on East State and Stone Street. So if, if you want these charts, we'll get them to you. If you don't, it's telling these speeds, telling you numbers. If you're interested, we'll get them. If not, we'll start making copies or at least get a copy of the mayor or somebody. Keep monthly.
We'll figure it all out eventually. It's amazing to see the amount of cars up there different times of day.
Exactly.
Because I know I was looking at the one Phil had on the computer on Stone Street. It's quite a few cars go up there between seven and eight thirty in the morning.
We ordered others additional brackets. They're here and batteries, we have two batteries for you, so we're charging one.
Four, you know, five.
Have we changed? Joe, you might want to know, seven, eight thirty going up Stone Street, most of the county employees that work at the SSS aren't even there now. They're down in Mexico.
Oh, really? That's right, too. Oh, I thought it was supposed to go, go like a week or two.
Yeah, I thought so too, but they're not.
Hmm. We worked out that all we had, some of them. That's all I have.
Superintendent.
Yep. Uh, first thing is, um, wanted the village residents to be aware that, uh, their paving will be in next week to start paving or chip stuff. Um, I'll mention the streets, East State Street from the bridge to the four corners, uh, Hemlock Circle, uh, Cascade from the bridge out to Stone Street and Park Place will be paved this year. Um, just a reminder, people mowing their grass, uh, it is illegal to blow your grass into the road. I've seen quite a few people that do that. Um, just making you aware of it. Um, the playground at Veterans Park is not up yet. We're in the process of removing the boat. That's going to the town of Turn. Once that's removed, uh, we'll start installing the playground. I believe Lions or the, yeah, American Legion.
American Legion.
The American Legion is going to help us with the soldiers, so hopefully we can get that up quick. Um, I also wanted to mention where the village has had, we're doing two projects this year. Um, I'm not sure when. One on East State Street, um, the culvert down by Maple Ave. We are going to put a, a new twenty-four inch pipe through there, extend it out on the Maple Ave side. So hopefully in the future we can actually put a sidewalk down through there. Um, we'll actually take that metal plate that's in the road where all the laptops all broke up. That's the reason it is. Throw some flowable fill in there. We shouldn't have an issue with it after that. Uh, like I was talking earlier, um, Stewart Street, continued project with that twenty-four inch storm that comes all the way down through the village. Um, we're going to realign the pipe, the bottom. The whole problem is with the amount of flow that goes down through there now, it's all corrugated pipe that's been in the ground for who knows how long. Um, the amount of flow is taking all the material that's on the bottom of the sediment that's been sitting there for years and years is now starting to wash away. The bottom of the pipes have been rodded out, so now we're getting sinkholes in people's backyards. So there's a project we're going to do, um, on Stewart Street, replace that. Um, just to let you know, I put in for another grant for Veterans Park to do the, the walkway, splash pad, handicap accessible, um, uh, concrete pad, handicap accessible in front of the bandstand. So when Dan has his music in the park, he can pack people in wheelchairs, whatnot, can go actually have a nice place to sit. Um, earlier, after submitting that grant, um, it was sponsored by Chuck Schumer. Then a couple of weeks ago, it was also sponsored by Christian Jill, Jill brand. And, uh, so hopefully in the near future, we'll hear a yes for that. And then possibly next year we can start on Veterans Park doing drainage, getting the walkway in there, um, making it more utilized for residents. I think, yeah. All goes well and we can put a splash pad up there and it'll be, it's going to be nice. That's it.
Anything for Capital Future Planet?
We, uh, we are, I, I talked with Tony here a few minutes ago or earlier for the meeting. Paul would like to get together with you maybe in a couple of weeks, uh, Friday morning because Tony doesn't have to work on Fridays early in the morning and, and talk about how we can develop a strategic plan with the money to put away in reserve for the coming years. I know we do have something, if we, if we're going to have that committee, we, we'll make it functional or, or promise to do it with it. That's it on that.
Anything on personnel?
Nope.
I would like to, uh, ask for an executive session later on for going over contracts. DPW personnel. Finance?
No.
Police and fire department.
I was at a meeting last month and we discussed the driveway in front of the firehouse. I've since had a somewhat of a conversation with Paul and Joe isn't here tonight. I thought maybe afterwards we could have a sidebar with him. Uh, I don't know if Paul's had a chance to maybe have that sidebar. If so, great. If not, uh, I know Paul and I talked about and I'm hoping you're, uh, we're going to be able to do, we, we've got some plans to figure it out in the future, but because I haven't had a chance to, it would have hurt upon me yet or what Paul's idea are and I agree with, I'm going to keep, I'll keep that under my cuff for now. Uh, that's all I have.
Police department. Fine board and zoning board, right, huh?
Yes, as far as I know, we didn't, we had no meeting, so I got nothing.
Vanessa, the board.
I had a meeting last week. Again, Kevin was there. Pretty good discussion about the lagoons. Which one are they?
Town, at their meeting tomorrow. Town, anything?
I have nothing, but I have a question. Uh, I think we need to ask, I've, I've been told that for the tax rolls, we'll no longer be taxed. We ought to, I'll get a copy of that revoucher motion so that we have it filed. I don't know much you've already seen of it, because I have not.
I think, I know they sent me something when they sent back the money last year.
But I think from here on in, they're not going to, they're not going to tax any municipalities in the county that have, have water systems on it and the one that's used, I'll say. So, that's all I have.
Recreation, we already discussed that. And we had the Rayco newsletter.
And I did, I did, uh, pen that, uh, some of it, Rayco, but, uh, most of it was very informative. Good day, Matt was there.
Yeah.
I think somebody won the Jeopardy at the end or not.
Should have. It was a close, it was a close one.
We played Jeopardy at the end, Jeopardy game. It was actually a good day.
Yeah, it was good.
How was the food from the culinary class?
They just had wraps or whatever. They were good.
Okay, public comment. Any public comment?
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to go on executive session.
I'll make it. I want to adjourn. Okay, go on executive session. And for the personnel?
For DPW contract, two things, DPW contract and attorney client privileges.
You get a place for an attorney. Okay.
Who's my second?
Paul, favorite?